Distinguished guests, may I have your attention, please? Your special session for the 19th R K U N Joint Conference on Disarmament and Non-Proliferation Issues will be begin in a moment. For the participants who will attend the conference via online webex, please turn on your video and remain your seat. During the conference, I ask you to refrain your using your mobile phones and switch to silent mode to minimize interruption. The session will begin in a moment. Please remain seated. Thank you. Distinguished youth colleagues and all the viewers watching the conference through a stream live via YouTube. Welcome to the Youth Special Session for the 19th R K U N Joint Conference on Disarmament and Non-Proliferation Issues. My name is Eilim Jin, Assistant Director for Disarmament and Non-Proliferation Division, Minister of Foreign Affairs, Republic of Korea. It is my great honor to have this opportunity to welcome you. And this youth session was organized to empower, engage, and educate young people in the field of disarmament and non-proliferation. It starts with Director Kim's opening remarks and presentations by five youth groups from all over the world, followed by group members' discussions. Before start, I would like to make an announcement to the YouTube viewers. During the session, please leave questions and comments on the session. Then we will deliver one or two questions to the panel and moderator right after the discussion finished. We are looking forward to your great participations. Now, I would like to invite Mr. Kim Il-hun, Director for the Disarmament and Non-Proliferation Division, Ministry of Foreign Affairs, will deliver his opening remarks. Please welcome him.
Thank you for the introduction. Distinguished youth representatives, our moderator, Mr. Ovink from the UNODA, and all our viewers on YouTube. Good morning, good afternoon, or good evening, depending on where you are. It is a great privilege for me to welcome you all to today's Youth Special Session. As you are aware, this session comes on the eve of the 19th R K U N Annual Joint Conference on Disarmament and Non-Proliferation, which will be held over the rest of the week. As an ardent supporter of the U N Secretary-General's Agenda for Disarmament and with a firm belief in the young generation as the ultimate force for change, the Republic of Korea introduced the resolution titled "Youth Disarmament and Non-Proliferation" at the first committee of the U N General Assembly last year. It was adopted by consensus with 84 co-sponsors. This indeed well illustrates the United Call of the International Community to empower, engage, and educate young people in this field. This is all the more imperative at this time when consensus in the global disarmament community is eroding in the midst of rising tensions around the world deterring progress. Fast-paced technological advances extending into the outer space and cyberspace, as well as hypersonic missiles and autonomous weapons, could easily turn into new domains of intensified arms race. It is against such a backdrop that today's session is taking place. We count on you, the representatives of from a wide array of youth groups, to deliberate on the theme "Disarmament and Non-Proliferation Regime in the New Era: New Technologies and New Challenges." If I may add a little twist to the Constitution of UNESCO, since the future begins in the minds of our young people, it is in the minds of the young that the defenses of peace must be constructed. We look forward to your candid ideas and perspectives to be reported at the closing session of the conference this Friday. With these remarks and without further ado, I would like to officially open the Youth Special Session and hand over the screen to our able moderator. Mr. Ovink, over to you, sir.
Much to Director Kim for the warm introduction for us all. Hi, everyone. Good morning, good afternoon, and good evening, depending on where you are. My name is Charles Ovink. I'm the Associate Political Affairs Officer for the United Nations Office for Disarmament Affairs. As part of my work on new technologies, I lead our responsible innovation efforts. Through these, we look to engage with youth, industry, academia, civil society, and governments to encourage the responsible use and development of new technologies, especially as they relate to disarmament and non-proliferation. That means the subject of today's conference touches me and my work and all of the representatives here very, very deeply. I'll be your moderator today, and I want to start by thanking our hosts, both those in person and online. As this is the pre-event for the 19th Republic of Korea United Nations Joint Conference on Disarmament and Non-Proliferation Issues, I know that we're all very excited. It will be the first to focus on new technologies and the first to feature a dedicated youth session. On that note, I also want to thank our participants. We have five representatives who will shortly be leading the discussion. They represent an extremely diverse set of youth groups and positions on disarmament and new technologies. In addition, another 20 members of the groups they represent are also in the audience right now, supporting. And this brings me to our viewing audience. I want to thank you all, and I want to second the point that Ms. Jin made earlier about questions in the comments. We'll keep our eyes on those as we get through, and we'll try to get to some of them at the end. Our aim today is to have a real discussion and engage substantively with some youth perspectives on new technologies and disarmament. And it's very important to us all to include youth voices. That's why we're having this special session. It's also the reason that we're not only having this special session. The youth panelists here will continue to participate in the closed-door sessions tomorrow and Friday, and the whole conference will end with closing remarks by one of our youth representatives. So before we begin, I should say that the points raised today are the personal views of those present, and they don't necessarily represent the views of the United Nations, the government of the Republic of Korea, or their home organizations. And that goes for me as well. I'm now going to start handing to our youth representatives, who will each get a few minutes to introduce themselves, their groups, and some of the key issues and perspectives they have identified. The first of these will be for the NPT Youth Group. And the NPT Youth Group, I should say, was launched at the 2020 Youth NPT Review Conference in Seoul, Republic of Korea. This is a model NPT conference on the 10th of July, 2020. It was inspired by the General Assembly Resolution on Youth Disarmament and Non-Proliferation and the Secretary-General's Disarmament Agenda. And it commemorates the 50th anniversary of the entry into force of the Nuclear Non-Proliferation Treaty. The Ministry of Foreign Affairs of the Republic of Korea held the Youth Model Conference to celebrate this date. The youth group includes 50 youths aged between 19 to 28, and they participated in the NPT Conference trying to engage in disarmament and non-proliferation-related seminar issues and activities. So with that, I will hand to Ms. Chairin Kim.
Let us transform means of mass destruction into creative production for the betterment of humanity. I've been an advocate of the Disarmament and Non-Proliferation Agenda since 2012. When I first participated in the Youth Nuclear Security Summit, a pre-event similar to this one, which was held prior to the Second Nuclear Security Summit that was held in Seoul. I was a middle school student back then, and anything related to military or security was like so distant to me. However, while preparing for the session, I realized that I am the direct stakeholder of the agenda and why we should keep a vigilant eye on the development and exploitation of dual-use technologies. Such revelation has also led me to participate in the 2020 Youth NPT Conference. It was held to commemorate the upcoming 10th NPT Review Conference, which was unfortunately postponed to a later date. For half a year, we've had five preliminary sessions and intensive lectures, and we've learned and explored substantial means to resolve the current deadlock on the nuclear disarmament agenda. With each student delegation participating on behalf of respective state parties to the treaty and struggling to adopt the final document that could compromise the strategic security interests of each stakes, we've reckoned how the issue of nuclear disarmament requires cooperation beyond borders. We've also acknowledged that we, the younger generations, are the ones who have to live through the formidable nightmare of mass destruction if a war to ever be unleashed. We are the ones to take on the responsibility on disarmament, to inform ourselves, to stay engaged, and to make a choice to build a world where technology can be used to enhance collective welfare of humanity. With such acknowledgements in mind, we, the NPT youth, would like to suggest three points in the present conference. First is the role of democracy in technological developments. We believe that urgent danger that the newly emerging technology poses is that they could lessen the burden of war. Optimists of such newly emerging technologies often proclaim that such technology would enhance precision and accuracy, could minimize collateral damage and unnecessary civilian casualties. We would like to point out that such optimism surrounding the modernization of military technology is exactly what we should look out for. We believe that once a rhetoric is formed, that such technologies would help us gain easier victories, easier wars. Therefore, war is a much more viable option. We think it is much more likely for politicians to frame threat or use a force as a much more likely policy option, although it is found in Article 2, Clause 4 of U N Charter. Hence, we would like to highlight the importance of responsible constituency and active public discourse to function as a deterrent against a case where politicians can abuse technology to claim use and ad valum. Second is preemptive option. We would like to emphasize that international regulations should be drafted in advance before the lethal autonomous weapons, hypersonic weapons, directed energy weapons, A I-supported weapons, and et cetera are actually deployed in warfighting. To encourage an adoptive international regulatory regime to be formed, the role of younger generations and public is once again accentuated. Last but not least is revitalization of multilateralism. What COVID-19 has taught us is that despite recent upsurge of anti-globalization and isolationism, transnational cooperation is still relevant to this day. We urge all global leaders and decision-makers to come to the multilateral table, share their perspectives, and devise flexible options and resolutions to prompt responsible development of new technologies. Although compliance with such regimes is a different matter, we believe continuous multilateral discussions can gradually lead to the establishment of a soft law, which could function as an international pressure for each individual nation-states to behave in a responsible manner, abiding by the international humanitarian law. We hope that today's conference would be a stepping stone in envisioning a meaningful, inclusive progress on the disarmament and non-proliferation agenda. We hope that we can make a choice to promote peaceful usage of new technologies. Let us transform the means of mass destruction and organized killing into means of creative production for the betterment of humanity. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chairin. That was fantastic. I think we've got some real material for when we get into the discussion there. I'm going to pass over to our next youth speaker to introduce themselves, and while the technical staff get ready for that presentation, I'll just introduce their organization. So our next speaker is part of the Youth Champions for Disarmament from the U N Office for Disarmament Organization. UNODA, with generous financial support from the government of Germany, called on young people between the ages of 18 and 24 from across the globe to apply for an innovative learning program aimed at empowering them to work for disarmament in their communities. The office sought youth who are motivated to use their talents to help raise awareness and promote change for a more peaceful and secure world. Out of more than 6,500 applicants from 157 countries around the world, a diverse group of 10 youth advocates were selected for this important disarmament initiative. One of them will be joining us now. This is Ms. Dylan Koach, who I'll hand to now.
You so much, Charlie. Hello, everyone. Good morning, good afternoon, and good evening. My name is Dylan Ezgi-Koach, and I'm beyond happy and honored to be a part of this conference today. I am originally from Turkey, Ankara, but today I'm joining from the United States in New Haven. I am a Master's in Global Affairs student at Yale University, Jackson Institute for Global Affairs, and my studies focus on international security, nuclear non-proliferation, and disarmament. And prior to Yale, I've been working on Middle East politics and especially on the conflict in Syria. Today, I represent the U N Youth Champions for Disarmament, which is an initiative of the United Nations Office for Disarmament Affairs, aimed at empowering young people to work for disarmament in their communities and help raise awareness and promote change for a more peaceful and secure world. Back in March 2020, over 6,000 people aged from 18 to 24 applied for this program, and then the UNODA then chose 10 people from all across the globe, a group which I'm honored to be a part of. The Youth Champions Program consists of several elements. One of them is a series of trainings, and we completed them about a month ago. We also will be working to implement a disarmament-related project in our own communities, and eventually we'll be taking a study trip to Geneva, Vienna, Nagasaki, and Hiroshima. We are a very diverse group of young people from different regions and countries all around the world, and also we have very different backgrounds, such as we have champions who are graduate students working on international security, conflict resolution, economics. We also have champions who are engineers or studying engineering. Among the champions, we all have very different reasons why we care about disarmament. We realize that in addition to the importance and urgency of the disarmament issue in its essence, disarmament is a prerequisite to international peace and stability, sustainable development, gender equality, and among many other issues. We all believe that each one of us as global citizens have interest in and responsibility for working towards disarmament goals to strengthen the global disarmament regime, the norms that are so vital to international peace and security, sustainable development, and eventually to the survival of our planet. We also strongly think that we cannot have development without secure communities. We believe that true, responsible, and effective education and advocacy, such as the Youth Champions Initiative, we can build the next generation of policy leaders and make sure that even a small community of people around the world with policy power in the future have this issue as a very central part of their life. This is why I think it is crucial that our group exists, because I believe that youth's effective and informed involvement in disarmament and non-proliferation is extremely necessary and crucial to tackle these issues. I would like to thank you again for the opportunity to be a part of this conference today, and I'm looking forward to the discussion and exchanging ideas. Thank you so much.
Thanks very much, Dylan. That was fantastic. I will be passing now on to the representative from the Comprehensive Task Ban Treaty Organization Youth Group. Just to introduce the group very briefly. Given that it has been more than 20 years since the opening for signature of the Comprehensive Nuclear Task Ban Treaty, becoming increasingly clear that the entry into force will be in the hands of the next generation of leaders and policymakers makes it very important to provide youth with access to the information and resources of the C T B T and its verification regime. The C T B T O Youth Group was set up in order to do this and to help that next generation, and has a membership of more than 200 students and young professionals from around the world. With that, I will pass it to Mr. Idris Irakose, who is the representative from the group. Idris, you're muted currently.
Can you now hear me well? Yes, thank you. Good morning, good afternoon. It has been an honor to be here. As you have just said, my name is Idris Irakose. I'm a Bulgarian, but I'm currently based in London, the United Kingdom. I'm one of the young people who are passionate about disarmament, non-proliferation, internal security, and I'm part of the C Y G group, which is the C T B T O Youth Group. In this short introduction, I'm going to be talking about three main topics. One will be the C T B T. The second will be C Y G, which is the C T B T Youth Group. And the third part will be the C T B T and C Y G in relationship to new technologies. First of all, as you can see in the title, the C T B T stands for the Comprehensive Nuclear Task Ban Treaty. It's a tool of non-proliferation and disarmament that was adopted in 1996, and that treaty bans nuclear explosions, sorry, nuclear explosions by everyone, everywhere, on every surface in the atmosphere and water and underground. The C T B T is a tool for international security since it makes hard for countries that do not possess nuclear weapons to develop them and those that already have these nuclear weapons to sophisticated them since it cannot allow them to test these nuclear weapons or devices. Unfortunately, the C T B T hasn't entered into force yet, and then it's not allowed. It's in that context that in 2016, the C T B T Youth Group was created. This youth group is youth initiative that works closely but independently from the C T B T O, and it currently has the membership of actually more than 800 young people, including academics, experts, professionals, and these people come from more than 120 countries. It has as main objectives to revitalize the discussions around the C T B T among former, current, and emerging policymakers, scientists, experts, and the media. It also tries to build a basis for knowledge transfer between generations, more specifically this generation and next generation to come in the future. So now let's move on to the C T B T and C Y G in relation to new technologies. So now let's move on to the CTBT and CYG in relation to new technologies. The CTBT verification regime rests on technology. To detect this explosion, I'm sorry, explosions of a device, whether it's nuclear or not, it rests on technology, and this technology is right on also to process and share information that has been found when they are analyzing this data. The CTBT actually uses the latest technology, which is one of the parts of the discussion today, to monitor these explosions. As for the CYG group, it intends to involve new technologies in advancing the CTBT's further universalization and entry into force. As I have already mentioned, that the CTBT hasn't entered into force. So this is what I have to say. It's a short introduction, but if you have any further questions, I'm here to help you. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Idris, and I'm really looking forward to when we get into the discussion on some of those topics. So the next youth representative I'd like to introduce joins us focusing on responsible innovation work. So to give a little background, a key aim of the Office for Disarmament Affairs Responsible Innovation Work is to join with STEM students who cover science, technology, engineering, and mathematics to build capacities for responsible innovation and to highlight its importance for fostering development as well as mitigating security and arms risks and ensuring the peaceful applications of science and technology. Students are engaged as part of the 2018 commitment to the Secretary General to engage and work with scientists, engineers, and industry to encourage responsible innovation of science and technology and to ensure its application for peaceful purposes. So with that, I would like to introduce one of the students that has been engaged under responsible innovation, and that is Mr. Jinghan Han.
Thank you, Charlie. Good morning, good afternoon, and good morning to everybody from all over the world. It's my pleasure to be here. My name is Jinghan Han, and I am a STEM student from the Singapore University of Technology and Design, and I'm here in this conference to provide a theme of perspective on this among and non-proliferation issue. So I would like to begin with explaining the importance of responsible innovation of emerging technologies. So as we all know, science and technology are advancing at an exponential rate, and they sometimes cause adverse side effects in the moral aspects. Critical decisions in this field are often made by highly specialized people, researchers, and scientists that may not have the necessary ethical tools or big picture view. For instance, just last year, a Chinese researcher called Dr. He Jiequai was sentenced to three-year jail for producing genetically altered babies. Let's pause for a second here. She did make a breakthrough in science and technology, but what about in the ethical aspects? Maybe not. In a simple case, any individual can make the decision to avoid any unwanted consequences of the hour. But in the world, the reality is that in any research and development work, the whole system is extremely complex and has many players and stakeholders. As such, responsible innovation recognize that these issues cannot be adequately addressed by individual actors, and it will require a multi-partner approach. And thus, this is why responsible innovation is critical in the field of research and development of emerging technologies. But what about emerging technologies? What is it? So as the word itself suggests, emerging technologies is something that is getting more and more gravity every day, and it will soon have a huge impact on this among and nonproliferation issue in the world. It's an impending force that the world cannot ignore, and leaders need to be constantly updated about it. So maybe just to briefly state my view, autonomous vehicle powered by intelligent is something that can potentially be a huge step forward for this among in many cities and governments who need to work closely with power sectors to manage it. Next, a crucial challenge for leaders around the world is big data, which is increasing exponentially every second, and the technologies present can possess information so large that our brain can never, ever keep up. As a student who has stable with data analytics and big data technologies, what I really fear in the future is the weaponization of data. With this, I would like to end off with a question for everyone. We are entering a digital age where everything is coming digital, from our small gadgets to the urban city as a whole. What can we do to ensure that emerging technologies are used positively and in a responsible manner and do not enhance among and nonproliferation issues? That's the end of my sharing, and I hope to be able to learn from everyone and share my views. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Jinghan. That was great. I think we're definitely looking forward to taking that question in with the rest of the discussion. So last but by no means least, I would like to introduce the final representative, who joins us representing the nine-member Youth Steering Committee for Disarmament and Nonproliferation in Northeast Asia. The group has been working together for more than a year and was first assembled by UNDPBA and is also overseen by UNODA. The group contributes towards operationalizing the UN's Youth, Peace, and Security Agenda in the Northeast Asia subregion by establishing inclusive dialogue platforms, facilitating exchange of opinion and practice among generations, and creating momentum for young people to participate in regional discussions related to peace, security, and preventive diplomacy. With that, I would like to introduce Ms. Moi Sasaki.
Thank you, Charlie, for the wonderful introduction. Hello, my name is Moi Sasaki. I am a peace builder and conflict transformation facilitator, working with youth and civil society. I'm currently studying for my master's at Salford University of London in Violence, Conflict, and Development. I'll be speaking from the perspective of ordinary citizens that are passionate about peace and disarmament. I'm here today to represent the Northeast Asia Youth Steering Committee for the Youth, Peace, and Security Project, as was introduced by Charlie. The project brought together youth from Japan, Mongolia, the People's Republic of China, and the Republic of Korea. Members came from academia, politics, and civil society organizations. Our group has worked together for the past year, over a year actually, to come up with recommendations and methodologies from the perspective of youth to further disarmament and nonproliferation. So in this program, we took part in online disarmament education through webinars and through speaking with experts and activists in the field. Through our training, we furthered our understanding of what disarmament is, but also how disarmament has been carried out, not only in the diplomatic field, but by civil society. From our training, our team has worked around three main issues: disarmament education, weapons of mass destruction, and emerging technologies. We dove into these themes to consider what youth perspectives we might offer to our leaders and decision-makers. So disarmament, from a personal perspective, is very close to my heart. Having grown up in countries such as Ethiopia, Rwanda, and Kenya, I have seen firsthand how the proliferation of arms has destroyed the lives of communities and people of my own generation. And it's because I have seen the direct effects of armament in these countries that I am adamant that disarmament is fulfilled in my home region of Northeast Asia. In Japan, we have experienced the destruction weapons of mass destruction can cause. Despite this, we have yet to declare Northeast Asia as a nuclear weapons-free zone. This reluctance to disarm leave a lingering taste of distrust that can be felt all the way to the citizen level, often violently appearing through the social media or at times of political unrest. I feel the presence of armament in our region whenever I have to say goodbye to my Korean brothers, who are sent to military service, and when I worry every time there is a missile launching from North Korea, for example. Disarmament and nonproliferation issues are often seen as an issue that does not affect us anymore, but I would argue that this is something embedded in our regional culture. It has become normalized, and this is what I fear the most. I hope that today, through this important time that has been given us, each of us presenting today can share with you that disarmament and nonproliferation are issues that are truly relevant to youth, and we hope that together we can take a more wholesome approach to finally achieving disarmament in our work. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Moi. I think you touched on a lot of really important issues there, and I think that's actually the perfect way for us to segue into the discussion. So now that we've covered all of our introductions and we know where everyone is coming from, and we can see how diverse this group is, we have five extremely challenging questions to discuss as a group. I'm going to pass to one person at a time to try and manage some of the flow, but we can feel free to jump in at any time if you just raise your hand using the raise-your-hand function. So the first one of these is, we all want a safer and more secure world. With that in mind, what should the international community prioritize to build back better after the COVID-19 pandemic? What needs to change and how? This question, like all of the other ones, is not necessarily one we'll be able to solve or answer right now, although it would be fantastic if we could, but I'm really curious to hear what people's thoughts are. So the first person I'll turn to with this one is Mr. Idris Irakose. So Idris, would you mind sharing your thoughts with us?
Thank you. Can you hear me? Thank you very much. This is actually one of the most challenging questions at this time, but I would like to answer these questions like this. The COVID-19 pandemic has proven to the world how human beings relate to each other. We've noticed things whatsoever. The pandemic reduced communities and destroyed economies. The pandemic caused divisions among policymakers on the one hand and created or enhanced opportunities for bilateral and matu-rotal assistance amongst nations on the other hand. We saw Russians, for instance, sending equipment to Italy, or Chinese sending equipment to African nations, to name a few. These types of assistance showcased the understanding of fighting common issues in synergies. They hinted also at what should be the priorities of the international community to build back a better, safer world. And in this regard, there are key lessons learned from COVID-19 that could help alleviate the artications in the future. First of all, there is a need for enhanced, inclusive, and responsible matu-rotal cooperation amongst various states and groups. In fact, as many of you might know, key diplomatic relations, except for some agencies and international organizations, are still run through governments. These relationships by governments are based on certain values, and they cannot be helped unless these values are existent. This type of diplomacy barely leaves a loop to cooperation in the case of a global issue that can destabilize the international security structures. Therefore, there is a need for including different people, such as young people, women's associations, various specialized agencies, and civil societies amongst others that can feel the gap left by the lack of cooperation between given governments. This inclusivity would allow sharing information at diversified levels and from different experiences and find solutions to global issues. Second, it is of paramount importance for the international community to work towards reducing the technological gap. In effect, since the pandemic threatened everyone, there has been limited in-person meetings in different institutions as most of the conferences were conducted from home. This has been facilitated by the recent sophistication of technologies. Unfortunately, this hybrid diplomacy was not easily practicable in many disadvantaged countries due to the lack of proper facilities. Their contributions to global issues have been once more inhibited. It is therefore significant for the international community to advance the means of communication for all in order to accelerate the fight against global issues in a coordinated and inclusive manner. Thank you very much. That's what I think on this particular question.
Thank you very much, Idris. Those are really interesting points. I particularly think it resonated quite strongly with the group, this idea of making up a cooperation shortfall. So if governments are not necessarily able to cooperate, maybe there is other groups, maybe young people, maybe civil society, and try and make up some of that gap. I think that actually relates quite a bit similarly to the points that Moi was making in her presentation. I wonder if I can pass now to Moi, if you have any thoughts on the same line.
Thank you, Charlie, and thank you, Idris, for starting this conversation up. I do believe that there is quite a gap in the information sharing and the technology, especially that we experienced in COVID. One place that I would like to kind of point to where we especially experienced a gap was our ability to really support international community in our, in our region. For example, in Japan, it was often international students and young professionals who were left not knowing how to really react to the COVID situation. And I believe that this kind of speaks to the fact that our technology, our information, and the way that our states were reacting to the situation was still focused on supporting nationals. Our concept of security was still very much focused on the nation, and I believe there is a need to look at these security issues at a more regional perspective.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point, and I like the idea of approaching things from a regional perspective. I think obviously that's a little bit of what you're already trying to do in the steering group, coming at it from a Northeast Asian perspective. One of the other points that Idris wanted to raise that I want to touch on before we move on is the idea of this technological gap and how maybe we can try and address a technological gap between states. Now, I'm putting him a little bit on the spot, but as Jinghan represents our STEM student component, I wonder if you have any thoughts about the technological gap, and specifically, how can we help each other address it, but also how big a problem is that technological gap? I'll pass to you, Jinghan.
Yeah, thank you, Charlie. To address the question of the technological gap, I would like to bring up the idea of open source. So for the STEM students or for any STEM professional, you know that open source is a technology or is a design that enable everyone to share their work, their efforts, and their community around the world. So in a more recent example, COVID-19 pandemic, where in my country, Singapore, we had developed an app, a smartphone, to be able to contact tracing for any infected cases. So let's say you are infected and you know that you've recently been really strong. Through contact tracing, through this contact tracing app, anybody who has come close to you will also get a notification that they have been near infected personnel. And this technology is actually very revolutionizing of the enable contact tracing effort to be stepped up significantly. And in this case, in my country, we do have quite a significant, quite a high level of technology where we have already done research and development on this out there. Answer the question about the technological gap, as mentioned, we are the point of open source, where other countries can actually participate in this design framework where they share their ideas, they share their work done, and they share technologies and research and development with everybody. This is something that I feel needs to change, and we should all stop in ourselves as countries and borders. We should all be open to sharing each other's information, knowledge, and work. Yeah.
Thanks very much, Jinghan. I think that's a really interesting point as well, because that's a good example of you can see how differently different countries deal with the problem. The contact tracing apps have obviously worked pretty well in Singapore and worked pretty well in our host, in the Republic of Korea, but other countries have also tried to develop But other countries have also tried to develop contact tracing apps that have not necessarily had the same success. So I think open source is an interesting approach there. I want to make sure we give some time to Chen, who's in the room representing the MPT Youth Group, and then we'll come back to this. Chen?
Hello? Okay. On the point of technological gap, I also wanted to point out some aspects about when launching multilateral discussion between states, this kind of technological gap could also work as a barrier for them to make a viable compromise in terms of how to regulate these newly emerging technologies. Because when we had our 2020 Youth MPT Conference, one of the biggest barriers that we experienced while trying to reach a final document is that countries have very different viewpoints regarding this issue of technologies or security, because they are starting from a very different positions. That means that some countries do have these kind of technologies already. They have made some kind of progress in terms of these kind of military technologies. So they're okay with not having any kinds of regulations. However, on the different point of view, countries that do not have those kind of technologies absolutely want some kind of regulatory regime to be initiated in this kind of in a manner that could regulate and that could make states to behave in a responsible manner. And I thought that gap has to be decreased or minimized in order for us to launch some kind of meaningful multilateral conversation or communication in terms of making in terms of how to regulate these kind of newly emerging technologies. And we think that it's important for all states to recognize that there is a discrepancy in terms of our starting points, in terms of our materialistic capabilities, but still begin multilateral discussions and to remain within the multilateral table so that we could have an open communication, an open conversational table to minimize this kind of gap and to actually hope for some kind of compromise to be made in terms of regulating newly emerging technologies.
Thanks very much, Chen. I think those are really important points as well. Before we move on to the next question, I just want to give two more people a chance to address this. So first, I'm going to hand to Dylan. And then I believe someone in the room as well has some more to add. So Dylan?
Thank you so much, Charlie. I just wanted to quickly add that I believe COVID-19 showed us the necessity to focus on a human-centered security. It showed us that even the countries with huge militaries, powerful weapons, and advanced technologies remain incapable with dealing with this global chaos unless they focus on the human and development part. It showed the world leaders that how underdeveloped their medical structures and healthcare systems are. It showed us the asymmetrical allocation of public funds and resources. So here, we should really learn a lesson and stop expanding armies, building weapons, and spend the necessary funds for healthcare and medical infrastructure. Thanks to COVID-19, I think people now have a better understanding of how a global catastrophe looks like. So now it is time to turn this into an advantage and start building back better. And a similarity between disarmament and response to COVID-19 is that we need a global understanding and response to these crises, where each and every person in the world has a share at stake. It is extremely important in current challenging environment to focus on conflict resolution and peace building so that we would not create a vacuum with possible long-term consequences. So to conclude again, we should learn vital and urgent lessons from our common and global COVID-19 experience and start applying these lessons to disarmament and nonproliferation fields as well. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Dylan. I think that was a really important point, especially on a human-centered approach. And you raised a point that I can see the other panelists are agreeing with in the chat at the moment, which is no matter what your expenditure is on arms, that can't necessarily help you very much if there is a global pandemic. So I think that's really important. I think that's something that's going to come up again in the other question. So I know someone in the room from the MPT Youth Group has their hand, so we can pass to them. And then we'll move to the next question.
Hi, my name is Dong Hun Bang from Friends of MPT Group. And thank you for bringing up such an important and awesome idea from other speakers prior to me. And to add on a minor thing, I think the the niche that has been giving the hope to international community recently is the niche of development of new vaccines for COVID-19. And it is really important to acknowledge the devotion of civil society in the development of those vaccines. For example, Pfizer was able to develop new vaccine because there were thirty to forty thousand patients of COVID-19 who volunteered from forty different countries to participate in phase three clinical trial of their new vaccine. And if we acknowledge those devotions, maybe it can act as a bridge toward decreasing the gap between those technological developments between nations. So even though the pharmaceutical companies are located in the rich nations, those rich nations those rich nations have experienced advantages from those civil societies from poorer countries and underdeveloped countries. So maybe those pharmaceutical companies can help implement those new technologies to those poorer countries. Thank you.
Thanks very much. No, I think that was a really important point too. And I think it's really important to stress as well the role that civil society has. So when we're talking about how we build back better or approach any of these issues, and disarmament and nonproliferation is a really strong one here, we need to make sure that we're not ignoring civil society and the massive role it's already played and has to continue to play. So mindful of time, I want to move straight on to the second question, which is how are your areas of interest affected by emerging technologies? How can you help the international community adapt to these fresh challenges and opportunities? So the first person I'll pass you with this is Dylan. So Dylan, if you can start us off, and then we'll pass on to the others.
Thank you, Charlie. Emerging technologies present both opportunities and challenges. And from the opportunities perspective, thanks to these advancements, we can now detect illicit arms trade or nuclear weapons activities through satellites, for example. However, emerging technologies, especially in the fields such as cyberspace, artificial intelligence, and autonomous weapons, have a significant impact, especially on military behavior of countries. Particularly in the nuclear weapons field, these emerging technologies might pose more risks and challenges to an issue that already faces significant challenges. Some of these risks and challenges could be cyber attacks could interfere with the operation of nuclear weapons and cause unintended operations and nuclear accidents. Countries may be too eager to apply these new artificial intelligence technologies before they fully understand the full implications of these technologies. And this can speed up warfare. And overhyped technologies could lead to premature investments and loss of resources. And another challenge we should deal with regarding this is that we need international control over these new types of technologies and effective laws and regulations regarding who uses these technologies and for what purpose. So to be able to start addressing these issues, we definitely need preemptive action. We need people in the decision-making process who understand the capabilities of these technologies. And very importantly, we need young people, engineers, scientists, academics, and policymakers who work on emerging technologies, who understand these technologies and would work for the goal of responsible innovation and contribute to the disarmament and nonproliferation field. This is, I think, could be an entry point to disarmament advocacy for young people instead of being a barrier. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Dylan. I think you also hit one of the big challenges there, right? Which is making sure that we have a combination of policymakers who understand the technical problems and technical specialists who understand the policy problem. Which has been a real challenge so far, but it's good that we have groups like this to try and address it. So given one of the other points you raised, which is some of the positive applications we might be able to get, especially with relation to some nonproliferation, I'd like to pass to Idris to look at this maybe from a CTV perspective briefly.
Okay. A chance for this opportunity. Yes, as you have just said, the CTVT actually relies on technology to detect nuclear explosions. It's that we have the IMS and the International Data Center, which monitor the air or the surface or the water, the underground, and the atmosphere. Twenty-seven, that's a twenty-seven point. So it's the technological advancement is something good for the CTVT. And it can be a tool for trust between countries, as the CTVT is showing it. Of course, it can be something positive. It's the CTVT is an organization that stands on political and scientific standards. The treaty has set up and agreed on certain types of technologies that it uses. This can imply that although the treaty does not necessarily rule out the inclusion of newer technologies, it recognizes the political environment in which it operates and therefore can retreat on some of the emerging technologies to be used. The emerging technology can really affect positively for the CTVT verification regime, but it still requires the agreement on the type which to embark on. So this is to say that the CTVT actually is impacted where by the technologies since it rides upon it to advance its verification regime. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks very much, Idris. I'm glad to hear that, because that's a very useful example of the positive uses we can get, especially for DNP of emerging technologies. I want to hand over to Jinghan, who's going to expand a little bit on one of the points we heard before. So Jinghan?
Yeah, thank you, Charlie, for passing your time over. So I'd like to expand on Dylan's previous point about engaging with scientists and researchers from emerging technologies and also to focus on responsible innovation. So in many countries, traditional government structure is there. There is a very clear line between state actors and non-state actors. So any private organization will not have any collaboration with government organization. This is totally understandable due to security concerns and security concerns as well as data. However, in the current world, we need to start thinking about adapting to fresh challenges and opportunities. Both state and non-state actors will need to start working together, both government and private organization will need to start thinking about working together, because everybody has something to offer. So maybe from the private organization point of view, they are very focused on profits, very focused on development. However, from the government point of view, they are more focused on public good and stability. As such, both sides have to offer for each other. And this clear line between government and a non-government company will need to be a lot further in the future. You know, for that. To bring up a personal example in Singapore, is that Singapore has already identified these and has launched a program called the Partnership Program, where government organizations have brought up collaboration opportunities and contracts to any researchers, scientists, and even professors in the private organization, as well as from different universities, for them to come together and collaborate to build on projects to make Singapore a smart nation. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks very much, Jinghan. I think Gray's another really valuable point there, which is obviously the blurring line between a number of different groups. And that's especially true with emerging technologies. As technology become general use, it becomes harder to say who has access, what their access means, and so on. I think that's also a really positive line that you're taking there, where we need to think about how do we integrate everyone, in the same way the Secretary General calls for. But then also, we need to think about what is the impact for non-state actors? What are the negative impacts of proliferation? So before we move on to the next question, I know someone in the room for the MPT Youth wants to join us as well. So if you can add your point?
Hello, I'm Chang Young-Bae from Friends of MPT Youth Group. So I wanted to focus on the role of technology and relationship with equality and security, expanding from what previous speakers have talked about. So first is related to education. So because of technological advancements, we became much more familiar with untouched education. But the challenge here is that economic inequality could expand to disparity in receiving education. Another field I wanted to discuss about was security and the right to have privacy. Even though we have much more wider access to information, thanks to global archive called Internet, I think that the flip side is that we are facing a major infodemic this day. And people are more exposed to fake news, causing more anxiety. So I think that keeping the balance between having more regulation and guaranteeing individual rights to privacy has become much more difficult. And I think that international community should strive to ensure fair opportunities for every member of the society and set proper regulations and standards so as to protect the rights of individuals. And overall, I wanted to comment that youth and younger generations can contribute to creating a more inclusive education and training environment to promote long-term development and prevent marginalization of the minority. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I think it's very important to have education and the problem of disparities of access to be raised here, which has obvious implications for the rest of our discussion group, discussion topics. So with that, I want to go to the third question, which is raising awareness about disarmament issues in younger generations is important for securing our future. What do you think have been the barriers for young people participating in disarmament issues? How can we overcome these? And what ideas do you have to further engage young people on issues of disarmament and nonproliferation? So Moi is going to handle this one to start with for us, so I'll hand over to Moi.
Thank you, Charlie. Concerning disarmament education, I think there is a certain sense of amnesia that young people have to our regional situation. The sense that regional tensions and the proliferation of arms is, in a sense, the norm. We need to create more spaces where we challenge this sense of fait accompli. We need more peace and disarmament education, as is underlined by this question. And we need to do this not only to teach what disarmament is, but how our security measures affect our daily lives and how we might carry out disarmament. But the thing is, this is not an easy thing. For example, starting this project, we started with the simple question of how does disarmament and nonproliferation affect our daily lives, my daily life? This was not easy to answer. And this is because there is so little information on the impact of security decisions from the aspect of our daily lives. It is very difficult for young people to have informed opinions when there is very little information on how security choices affect us. So this naturally reinforces the structure where youth are unable to enter certain aspects of this decision-making process. And it makes us assume that security measures are probably ensuring our well-being. However, this begs the question, if the security decisions being made are for our well-being, then why can't we be more informed about the impacts of these measures in our daily lives? As a next step, I ask that we make it an imperative to create data. This was touched earlier, but the importance of data is key. And the carrying out of analysis of how security decisions impact the lives of youth and ordinary citizens is also very important, because this allows tangible information that gives us something to work on as we teach disarmament to our citizens.
Thanks, Moi. Those are really good points. I think that's a really good idea about a kind of amnesia, where it's very easy, especially when you're younger, to assume the way things are is the way things must be. But also to assume probably someone is dealing with these problems, right? Like someone in a back room somewhere. And I think a really important point of having this group, and you can see this group's engagement, are aware. But usually, that's not the case. Usually, what we need is young people like this. I want to hand to Dylan, because I know she has a point on this too.
Thank you, Charlie. I would like to continue with a lot of the things that already pointed out. And I think one of the most challenging barriers is that disarmament engagement is relatively strong. And I think one of the most challenging barriers is that disarmament engagement is relatively strong on the national level, dealing with the governments. But it's relatively weak on the individual level, and it seems like it's possibly getting weaker because of lack of interest of anyone who is younger than someone in the government and anyone who is not in the government. And when we talk about disarmament and nonproliferation, especially young people tend to think that this has nothing to do with me, my everyday life, unlike the climate change and social justice issues. There's a tendency to think that this is such a big issue that should only be dealt by the governments and the policymakers. However, we, the youth champions, believe that this is not the case. We believe that you do not have to be a diplomat or a political scientist to be a part of disarmament. Whoever you are and wherever you are, you can contribute to our common future because it affects each one of us and we all have something to contribute to the global disarmament goals. And disarmament can only be effective when it properly engages with everyone. Another barrier I could mention is that disarmament and nonproliferation issues are away from the public discourse. Especially in the developing countries where there are so many daily urgent issues such as conflict, economic downturn and downturn and social unrest. This issue is not being prioritized. So what we can do is that moving this issue to the public discourse. While armaments affect every single person around the world, for example, nuclear weapons, which pose a threat for all humanity, many young people might think these issues do not concern them. For example, in Turkey, disarmament is not an issue that is top of mind for a lot of young people and can be harder to make a connection with because it's not something we see as a major issue in our communities. So it is absolutely necessary to explain to young people that disarmament and arms control are necessary for a safer and more secure world for all of us, for sustainable development and economic growth. And to also explain the ways that each of our governments and our communities have a role to play. Lastly, I think because of all these things, this is, I think, why this very conference, the youth groups we have here and the U N O T's efforts like Seventy Five Words for Disarmament were extremely important in terms of youth raising their voice and their voices being heard. This is also why I think this youth special session is extremely important to include the youth in the discussion through education, advocacy and raising awareness. Thank you so much.
Thanks very much, Dylan. Those were also excellent points, and we're running a little low on time, so I want to hand straight to Idris, who I know has crucial information here.
Yeah, thank you, Charles. I think um Dylan has just taken almost all my points, but I'm going to try to be as brief as possible using some of the cases and eh there are issues that's make people, especially young people, do not eh get engaged in disarmament issues. And I'm going to be using the case of Africa. Dylan was talking about civil wars or other issues that are in particular countries, and that's what has been going on in countries that are in Africa. And sometimes there is lack of education because if you try to see um what the disarmament can do to these populations, sometimes it's beneficial to them, but indirectly and they do not see it. For example, there is a link between nuclear tests in in air, water and environmental pollution. This implies that if they know that burning nuclear tests will help future generations to breathe pure air and fish without risks of eh radiation, they will be interested in issues of disarmament. And as I was saying, when I was working at the C T B two, I was eh engaged in raising the awareness of eh nuclear tests in Africa. But most of these young people were saying that they cannot be involved in the issue of nuclear tests or nuclear armament or disarmament because Africa does not possess those weapons. Besides, Africa is a stand on the treaty called the Pian Daba Treaty, which bans nuclear devices on the African continent. So they were like, there is no way we can embark on this unless there are other issues that are on spot. And another issue that I would like to raise is the lack of political motivation. With issues that I have talked above, many politicians are more concerned with the issues that will directly benefit the locals and do not give any priority to the international security. And disarmament, nonproliferation are victims of this lack of political motivation. So with this, I propose to eh to policies, the first one is to engage many young people in disarmament sector since it it is significant to improve the education on the matter of disarmament eh and nuclear nonproliferation. This can be done by including some of these issues in the curriculum of the universities or or by organizing conferences, meetings, events within university premises where the importance of the disarmament and international security will be debated about. Second, cooperating between various initiatives that are run by youths or include many young people is need to help those with no prior knowledge to look over the horizons. This can be done by, for instance, inviting those that are already in the sector with substantial knowledge and those without any experience to sit together and from to learn from each other. This is important because sharing of information can benefit both parties and help disarmament practitioners to know better where the issues are and implement better practices. Thank you.
Very much, Idris. And yeah, I think those are all important points, especially this unfortunate idea of uh youth consulted in Africa almost being victims of their own success and viewing the success of making sure that Africa is a continent free of nuclear weapons means that they don't feel they can engage on the subject. I think for time reasons, we're going to have to go straight to the next question, which is, in a changing world, what do you think leaders can and should do to maintain and enhance the disarmament and nonproliferation regime? And Chen, who's in the room, will be handling that one for us first. So Chen, I'll hand to you.
Thank you, Charlie. Although disarmament and nuclear weapon and nonproliferation issues are, as we've talked about, is something that is directly related to our everyday lives because it is also an issue related to high politics, which is, you know, like it's an issue related to state survival. That means that it is by an essence rendered to something that leaders can and maybe sometimes only leaders can make meaningful and tangible change in terms of proceeding, I don't know, like M P T review conference or uh launching talks about uh between Russia, China and United States. And that's one of the reasons why youth are often discouraged from participating in this um agenda because it is seen as something that leaders can only make a meaningful change. But with that being aside, still leaders do have responsibility in proceeding uh and overseeing the responsible development of newly emerging technologies. And one thing I would like to suggest for the leaders to do is that they should set up some kind of ethical guideline or um uh principle in terms of when they are um uh investing in this kind of private industries or private sector or private companies to develop these kind of newly emerging technologies. For example, um bringing all my personal point of view or personal interests into this question is that because I live in a country where Russia, China and United States are all upon where their strategic interests are conflicting on the Korean peninsula, I think it's really important for those countries to um kind of have a restraint in terms of developing their new uh newly emerging technologies. But when we see the case of United States, I think it's a relative, I think uh United States is relatively a case where civil society can actually exercise some kind of meaningful check and balance against uh the private industries. When we look into the case where Google had to drop out of the uh contract they had with Pentagon because their employees protested that Google should not step into the war of businesses. Unlike United States where civil society can actually have an active manner in terms of check and balance. I think when you look at Russia or China, that is relatively not the case. That means that because they maintain an authoritarian control over their people and because private sectors are, the line between private sectors and public sectors is blurred in China and Russia and because a lot of those tech companies receive a lot of fund from their governments. I think it's really hard for, from the civil society to step up and to ask for some kind of guidelines to be made in advance uh in advance of those developments. So I think it is very important for the leaders to take a preemptive step and try to give out some guidelines or give out some principles in terms of funding the academia or in terms of funding the tech companies when they're addressing this newly emerging technologies, although this might be a wishful and maybe optimistic suggestion. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Chen. And I think Moi has a point that she wants to build on with this. So I'm going to hand over to Moi.
Thank you, Charlie, and thank you for a really interesting point that you made. Um, touching on this concept of um kind of ethics that we have to follow as as um national leaders and as developers of these new technologies. I also um wanted to highlight the importance of um where these ethics come from. Uh, can we give those ethics up all to the to the state and um expect these to be um in line with what citizens want? And this kind of goes with my point of there is really a necessity to encourage regional and international cooperation and interaction between citizens and to really start to build this kind of identity uh of values that we want to follow as citizens of a region, for example, Northeast Asia or citizens of the world. And um this might seem utopian, but it is only rational to think that if we are making decisions on these issues that affect our daily lives, then it should come from uh what we value as citizens. And this is something that um our group, the Youth Steering Committee, has been working on uh simply uh by coming together uh across four Northeast Asian uh countries and really talking about what are the values that we hold dear? And based on those values, um what kind of disarmament and security decisions do we want our leaders to take? And I think oftentimes when we talk about these kind of ethics and values and uh shared cultures, they're swept aside as something that is uh not practical, too soft, especially in comparison to these security issues. But I would argue that um we really need to start uh changing the culture of how we think about these things. Uh, there's a lot of times this notion that our societies are being built on cultures of war and cultures of competition. Instead, if we were to start to think of how can we create cultures of peace in our in our regions and in our education, perhaps uh these prioritization will start to change and these kind of values that we can hold as a region uh will be prioritized. And and for this, we really need to rely on uh cooperation. And I really believe that technology, uh something that we are using right now, uh is a key uh in bringing this about.
Thanks very much, Moi. I think you raised a really important point that I'm glad someone uh addressed so uh clearly, which is the idea of our value. Because it's very important when we talk about how new technologies can impact disarmament, nonproliferation, policy in general, to think about whose values are we talking about, what values, what do they mean? I think that's actually a really good point for us to pivot to the final discussion question because it looks at this issue a little bit. So the final question is, looking to the future, what do you think are the most pressing opportunities and challenges that emerging technologies present for disarmament and nonproliferation? And Jinghan is going to start this one off for us. So Jinghan, I'll hand over to you.
Yep, thank you, Charlie, once again. So um I'll start off with about one opportunity and challenge, as I have to propose a foreseeable future for everyone. So to start about the opportunities, as mentioned in my introduction, um I think that autonomy can be a step forward for this phenomenon in many cities. Oh, as you all know, autonomy are powered by A I and they will soon take over the streets. For many people, they see this technology as a hassle-free transportation. But for me, I see it as a data collection machine. You can collect a lot of data in the city at real time with no delay. So let me relate the related to the jobs of uh policemen on patrol as well as security cameras. Both of them have the task of of looking out for illegal activities as well as taking any actions against them. However, for cameras, they do have blind spots, and for policemen on patrols, they don't need to rest. As such, this is where autonomous vehicles come in and hire their job, are patrolling the streets twenty-four seven, and there will be no blind spots. So now this is very interesting. How can autonomous vehicles, which collect data, be able to be a potential two-step forward for this phenomenon? Due to the fact that they they collect a lot of visual data and using computer vision technologies, they can easily pick out any illegal or suspected activity, possession of firearms, as well as illegal usage of firearms. Effectively, this will turn into a deterrent for any terrorist or rebel group either, for them not carry firearms around or use any of these firearms in their communities. You know, the fact that they know that vehicles are constantly watching over them. This this determine also lead to policemen and also any former national guards being able to reduce their firearms as well. And this effectively aid government to make the city a safer place for. So now moving on to the challenge of emerging technologies. Is, as I mentioned in the my introduction, is about the weaponization of data. This is something I felt that a lot of government and organizations out there are not really aware of. Or rather, they are not really focused on them. Data can be weaponized, and many leaders and organizations really need to be aware of this. To bring up a recent example will be maybe not for reason, will be a sample of Facebook Cambridge Analytica case where this company called Cambridge Analytica, they use those data to influence citizens through political advertising. This may be to you, it is not such an example, but in many articles I read about it, they describe this as a weaponization of data. Another example I would like to bring in is actually a movie, Captain America, The Winter Soldier. In this movie, putting on action, it's like, is that the scientists in the movie have developed an algorithm that's able to use the citizen's data to pick out any possible future threats and eliminate them immediately. Although it's a good movie, but I would say that this can effectively be very risky, and to be honest, I find it quite scary. Although data is not recognized as weapon in this phenomenon or nonproliferation, I can only say that you all should be aware of it, and it's only a matter of time before data can become a weapon. As such, in a foreseeable future, I would say that I foresee the formation of an international organization called the World Data Association. Is this is due to the fact that there's an exponentially increasing amount of data and many people are developing and using them for their own good. This international organization, according to my foreseeable, is that you actually aim. So let me just review state of she aims now. The first aim is that the World Data Association will have the aim of ensuring even distribution of data to all countries, especially the less developed ones for economic purposes. The aim is to watch over the ethical usage of data, especially by researchers and scientists. And lastly, the third aim, probably the more important one to me, is that they will seek to prevent weaponization of data by both state and non-state actors. With this, I come to end my presentation and I'll hand over to Charlie. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Jinghan. That was very, very interesting. I think it's really important to have that kind of focus on data as well, which I think a lot of people, you're right, don't think of as being weaponized or don't think of as a disarmament or nonproliferation problem, when it clearly is. So I know there's a couple of people in the room with the M P T Youth Group who want to add to this. So I'm going to pass straight to them, then we'll probably get towards the Q and A. Thanks.
Thank you, Charles, Charles, for the opportunity. Um, and also thank you, Jinghan, for the nice introduction about how data can be weaponized and about three aspects. Um, I also would like to express my agreements to, especially in terms of how you pointed out how non-state actors could weaponize data in the process of their aggress in the process of expressing their aggression. I'd like to point out some of the more traditional aspects of how opportunities and challenges can be presented with the development of technology in disarmament and nonproliferation. Although some of the opportunities that might be presented might be contradictory to the challenges, such as how technological development in in um technological development can advance weaponization and can lower civilian casualties. However, when we lower civilian casualties, that also means that countries have a more um viable option as to approaching war, so it might become more of a challenge rather than an opportunity. Another opportunity regarding disarmament was one that I think Idris pointed out earlier in the discussion. We can modernize the disarmament process and also modernize how analysis of um um how disarmament process is going on and thus enhance transparency and trust for the international community. Um, as for challenges, I believe that the most important challenge that faces us with the development of technology would be development of technology would be how the asymmetry of information could pose a grave threat to international security. Technological developments can obscure national security policies, and they can obscure how the economic or the military might of, of a country's enemy might react. So that sort of asymmetric information might, might deter countries from really knowing what kind of position they are in, and this could also put them into a dangerous standoff, such as in the case of Saddam Hussein, who bluffed that he had weapons of mass destruction. But when the Bush administration invaded Iraq, there weren't any weapons of mass destruction. So this sort of information asymmetry could create large-scale world devastation. So that could be a very big challenge to us. Another challenge would be related to accountability. This could be related to how automated weapons could be, we could, we could lose control of automated weapons and how that would create another catastrophe. And also, from another aspect, how the incorporation of the private sector into warfare could lead to a situation in which the private sector, the private industry, which is not an entity according to international law, cannot be held accountable for international heinous, internationally heinous crimes that have been committed in, committed during warfare. So that would be another challenge with regards to technological innovation. The last, the last one, the last point that I would like to focus on is how the lack of regulation in the current status quo makes us very vulnerable for countries to throw themselves into a new arms race or such things like that. There is currently no legal framework whatsoever to regulate the newly developed weaponry as, that we have right now. And although the reason we have this conference right now is to create such sorts of regulatory frameworks, it needs to be done fast. So, so as to deter technology from getting ahead of us and from humanity. Thank you.
Thanks very much. And I think it's very good to have that point on the potential for an arms race there. I know that there's one more person in the room who has a point they'd like to make. So if I can ask you to make it briefly, we'll then move on to some Q and A. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Charlie. SuJin came from NPT Youth. And I also want to add on some points to the things that have mentioned before. With the development of technologies, it would be very, I mean, obviously easier to raise awareness in the disarmament issues with, using the social media networking services and such. And also, the nation states would less, are less prone to use weapons against each other because, for instance, I will use this supersonic missiles to you, and you cannot defend with your existing system these missiles. But like here, they have this quantum energy, use drones, they can now defend the new missiles. So it will prevent the nation states to use those new weapons against each other. And also, I would like to mention one challenge that can add on to other points, that is, we, I mean, with this system of, like, with this automized, auto, auto, automation systems, there's always this possibility existing for errors and failure in the system. So we have to also consider that this system can also crash and make, make mistakes otherwise that human wouldn't have made. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think that's a very important note for us to end that discussion question on, and also a slightly scary one. It's always a good way to end it. We're going to move now to some general Q and A. We have some questions coming in from YouTube and some questions coming in from the chat. The first one coming in from the chat is, "For the young people watching, who and who will watch in the future, what are the first things they can do to start being involved? Please share an example of a successful youth initiative on disarmament and/or YPS that other youth can take, can take the idea or the motivation from." So we're running relatively low on time, so I think we're going to do one person for each of these questions. So I wonder if maybe Moi, if we can go to you on this one.
Thank you, Charlie, and thank you, Kishi, for this great question. I think this is the, the difficult question, isn't it? How do youth get involved without, we keep on saying you don't have to be opposed at this concept or these technologies, but you can still be involved. But not many people answer the question, how? And so you have touched me with this, but I would just speak from my own experience. And that is that really try and understand how these security measures and the effects of these issues, if they don't follow these security measures, how will that affect you personally? And for me, it does end up becoming quite a, sometimes emotional realization of the reality that, for example, my brothers, who I grew up with in Korea, will be fighting against Japan, for example. And I think it is important to kind of move from that upwards to then what are the things that the government is doing to ensure that that won't happen? Is a measure that is being taken relevant to what we want to achieve? So that this will kind of lead to the question of, is having armament the way we want to keep peace in our region, for example? And I think one way that we can really start to encourage this kind of dialogue is to kind of step out from our own countries, from our own nations, and look at these conflicts and look at these issues of peace from different perspectives. Because that really gives us a new idea of how these measures are affecting people in different nations, which can oft, oftentimes be completely opposing what we think of in our own countries. As an example, the work that is being done by organizations such as Peace Momo, which is a peace education organization in Korea, or Northeast Asia Regional Peacebuilding Institute, that brings together civilians and youth from around the region to really think about peace and security together and build skills on having deeper discussions about this is a great opportunity to get involved. Also, even this work that I am involved in with the youth from the different countries of the region, to really think about disarmament and learn together about disarmament, has been something that has encouraged me and motivated me to further this work. So I would really underline the importance of kind of learning together, not just with like-minded people, but with people who might sometimes have opposing thoughts on these issues.
Thanks very much, Moi. You're right, that was a genuinely difficult question, and I think you handled it very, very well. I think one thing that I hope anyone watching can take from this is that all of the youth representatives here today are from groups that are joinable. There are things you can try and engage with if you want. And Moi raised a really important part of that, which is how important it is to talk with and work with people who don't necessarily have the same background, the same home organization or entity as you, because it helps to bring up some sort of broader engagement. The next question we got from the YouTube is, "What implication can we draw from the current COVID-19 pandemic, especially as regards to new risks of advanced biotechnology or technology in general?" So with this one, I will pass to Jinghan, see if you have any quick thoughts.
Yep, so, thank you, Charlie. So let me maybe just mention briefly that I, I once served in a Singapore Armed Forces as a responder to biological threats, and I see the percent on how, how difficult it is to counter these threats, especially in the form of bio-weapons. Even the fact that there's, there have been a convention called a biological weapon convention, there are still non-state actors out there developing their own bio-weapons. And thus, what indication can we draw from the current Korean pandemic? As regards to new ways of, of bio, bio, bio-technology, I will only say this one word is that collaboration. Government from all over the world need to collaborate together and share information as well as to share their efforts in order to counter all these private research and development of bio-weapons by non-state actors. This come in the form of more diplomacy as well as more computing between government and conflicts between any, any kind of government will need to be helped maybe immediately. And as such, I will say that bio-weapons is not something that you can see with eyes, it's not unlike nuclear weapon, unlike firearms. Bio-weapons are effectively invisible enemy, and the only way to counter them is for us all to work together to prevent them happening. Yeah, thank you, Charlie.
Thanks very much, Jinghan. It's really useful to have your experience brought in there as well. The next question we have is from the chat group, and it is, "How would we bridge the gap between innovators, so industry, higher education, and regulatory bodies, states or multi-state actors, when often the rate of innovation outstrips the regulatory process, especially when we're dealing with unknown effects?" So I'm going to pass this one to Dylan.
Thank you, Charlie, and thank you for this question. I believe to be able to address this issue, we need meaningful inclusion of diverse ranges of groups in responsible innovation and emerging technologies. For example, when we have a new AI principle in place or militarization of new technologies, we usually have a small group of people or countries who are being consulted. This creates serious problems, problems for any regulation to work, and also creates various gaps in any kind of approach. So we should start meaningful engagement with people outside our traditional groups, and we should realize that new technologies might create opportunities for people to get interested in disarmament topics. We should communicate that everyone uses emerging technologies in a sense, but no one really understands it. So finally, emerging technologies should be an area that could make people involved instead of presenting a new barrier to entry. Thank you so much.
Thanks very much, Dylan. Yeah, I think that's a very important point, that everyone uses emerging technologies without necessarily understanding them. But it's also a really important valuable point on regulation as well. For the final question, I want to return to the room. I'm going to ask Cheryn if you could handle this. So as we approach the fifth anniversary of UNSCR 2250 on YPS, Youth, Peace and Security later this month, what opportunities have emerged to increase the involvement of young people in discussions on disarmament in your view? So I'll hand that over to Cheryn. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Charlie, and also for the question. I think the opportunities that newly emerging technologies have posed for young people is that it's, it has become relatively easier for us to self-educate ourselves and also to be involved. As Moi talked about, it's really hard to expand the question upon how does this technological issues impact my life to what can I do? Like, the question, the second question, the latter question is relatively hard to answer, and it's really hard for us to think of a viable method that we could make tangible changes upon the issue. But I think the opportunities, the new technologies that has presented to us is that we could easily access social media or other kind of internet websites or other kind of, for example, like Instagram or Facebook or whatever, or other kind of like internet websites. You could log on to UN or UNODA, and you can watch diverse videos or diverse lecture materials or diverse resources that you could easily get access to. And you can also make, self-educate yourself, and you can make a choice to stay informed and to stay engaged upon the matter. And I think that that is the most important opportunity that newly emerging technologies has presented for us. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Chenan. I can see that another member in the room wants to add there, so I think we'll take that, and then I'll move to wrapping up. So you're on. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. So I want to point out that the fifth, regarding to fifth question and the first question, youths are already professionals in the disarmament issues. Because the technological development has given a rise to the cyber domain, if you use Facebook, Instagram, YouTube, and you see those fake newses, you are there for fighting back against those fake newses. And those fake news is important because those are antagonistic action toward dismantling the cooperative society and nations. So I think even though, like, if you're not really well-informed about jet fighters or nuclear missiles, you can still be a profession, professionals within those cyber domains. So if you have opportunities, I think it's really important to actively engage in those disarmament issues. And if you can, you can raise your voice for the world peace too. Thank you.
Thanks very much. I think that was a really excellent point for us to end on, because that's really true. Hopefully, that's something you can take from seeing this and seeing all the people who've spoken, is how broad disarmament and nonproliferation is as a topic, how different the different subject areas are, and that you don't need to be an expert in every single subject area. You can all see how valuable the discussion is between people who have different focuses. So with that, I think I have to stop us there, as we have reached the end of our time and reached the end of the extra time that the hosts have very kindly given us. I want to thank our hosts again and thank our participants and the audience for an excellent discussion. I'm genuinely very curious to see how your thoughts will develop over the next few days and what the takeaways will be as you engage even further with the disarmament and emerging technology communities. I think everyone, if you have the time, can please check UNODA's hashtag #Youth4Disarmament. There is a website focusing on that initiative, provided with generous funding by their government to the Republic of Korea, www.youth4, the number four, disarmament.org. You can also look at the CTBT Youth Group at youthgroup.ctbto.org, and you'll be able to find other details on their website for the conference. So with that, thank you very much to everyone. Goodbye.
Okay, lastly, thank you very much, Mr. Obik. And thank you for all your great presentations and discussions via not only the onsite here, but also online by via YouTube. Now, we have reached a conclusion for the first day of the conference. And I, I would like to extend my warm, warm regards to all of you for being part of this conference and hope to see youth colleagues again in the field of disarmament and nonproliferation activities. And I would like to express my gratitude and appreciation to Ms. SuHyun and Charlize and five presenters of each group for the successful youth session to be held. Thank you very much, and good, good afternoon, good night, and, and good evening. Thank you.